All right, folks. It is time to start our meeting of August 22nd. I want to welcome all of you to Fresno City Hall and to our meeting of this day. It's an exciting day for all of us, and it's particularly exciting for one individual. So we have a vacant seat. I assume you guys are going to switch. One, two, three, four. Well, with that, we will start with an invocation. I'll start with roll call, please.
Councilmember Bretafeld. Councilmember Chavez. Councilmember Esparza.
Present.
Councilmember Soria. Council Vice President Arias. President Capriolio.
I'm here, thank you. And next, we'll go to the invocation by worship pastor Rebecca Townsend. She's from the North Park Community Church. Pastor Townsend, would you please join us? And after the invocation, we will salute our fantastic flag. So remain standing, please. Let's all rise, thank you.
Good morning. Let us pray. Creator God, wise and loving, full of justice and truth, mercy and grace. May our posture before you this morning first be one of gratitude and then humility. Thank you for the many abundant blessings we have all known which have come from you, the gift of life, the measure of health we enjoy, friendship, and the privilege to work on behalf of those within this great city, Fresno. Would you grant those in leadership the ability to serve with honesty and courage? May these virtues guide and temper all the decisions made here today. Help us all to act with character and conviction, listening to understand as we pursue goodwill. Help us to speak with clarity and restraint. May we have a spirit of service as we seek to steward the authority that you have granted each one of us. Help us to see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us and treat all persons regardless of race, religion, status, gender with the reverence your creation deserves. And finally, great Father, I pray, would you renew council members Soria, Carbasi, Arias, Capriolio, Chavez, Bretafeld, and Esparza with strength from your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of a human person. We ask this knowing that you are the source of all good things, desiring to give good gifts to your children. We are confident in your goodness and love. Amen.
Amen. Place the flag, please. Ready, salute, I pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Appreciate that prayer. So this is the exciting day, so what we're going to do is jump right to the most exciting moment of the day, and that is actions pertain to a special election held on August 13th. The clerk has a resolution declaring the results for the special election held on August 13th. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
That is correct.
Okay. Do you need a motion on that, or just a confirmation? I'll make a motion to approve the resolution. Seconded by member Chavez. Is there any opposition to the motion? Seeing none, passes six, zero. Now, we're going to take a small break to swear at Mr. Carbasi. It's an exciting day for him and his family. We're happy to see all of his family here supporting him, as families always do. So we'll go into the back, and we'll do a brief recess, we'll come right back out, and proceed with our agenda. So thank you for your patience. Now, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Would any member of the council like to pull an item for discussion? If it is pulled, we set it over to 1:30 to have that discussion so we can continue with our agenda and keep everything timely. So, would any member of...
Yes.
Okay.
One J.
One J?
Yeah.
That's it?
Yes.
Okay. Member Arias?
One P.
One P?
As in Paul. Council President, correction, it's one P and one Q, they're both related.
One P and one Q?
Correct.
Okay. I think I'm going to pull item one E. Anyone else?
I punched up.
Miguel's still up there, so... Actually, this is a horrible system because I can't see the total screen to see everyone that's punched up, so forgive me if I miss you, but member Soria?
Thank you. I don't know if I need to pull this, but on one I, I do have a conflict. This is the State Center Community College, and I don't know if my colleague also, Council Member Esparza, because we are adjunct.
Yes, I'll also be recusing myself from one I.
So do we remove it? Do we pull it?
What you can just say is when you vote on the consent calendar, just register that as recusal on that item.
Okay.
Okay, we'll register accordingly through the clerk's office.
Recusal on that one, and then I'd like to pull item one N.
One N. Anyone else? Okay. Anyone in the public like to come forward and comment on any item on the consent calendar? This is your opportunity. We would ask that you give us your name and address. You'll have three minutes to speak.
Nancy.
Nancy. Okay.
I think they pulled one in, right?
No. Yes.
So that's going to be on 1:30?
Yes, but if you have a busy schedule and you'd like to address it right now, you'll have three minutes. It's up to you, sir. I want to accommodate you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Let me... I tried to make sure that everyone had a copy of what I wanted them to follow regarding one N, the contract to give Sequoia Western the entire weed abatement or weed abatement public nuisance contract. So if you've got it, just page one, I'm A and S grading, and one of the things that we've been trying to do, I've been a contractor with the City of Fresno doing this particular job for about 19, 20 years, and one of the things that we have been trying to accomplish is equality in the midst of discrimination. Now, we're certified DBE, disadvantaged business enterprise, MBE, minority business enterprise, WBE, women business enterprise, and we're local, okay? The code enforcement department has been successful in getting rid of three of the last four minority contractors. I think Harris Senior, Brown, and then Harris Junior, and I'm the last one, but I've been there all these years, and they've just not been successful. I guess I just can't read the, I can't get the reading on the wall right, so I've stayed there. But if you look at number B, it says, "There's a move to remove me from a company also." And I want to share that they've tested me. They've tested me. I worked for about seven years before I realized that I was not being treated equally, okay? And then I complained about not getting work and not getting paid on time, so, and I discovered that the other contractor had big parties, was having big parties at his house, and that didn't hurt him in terms of getting the work. They tested me. Once they found out that I was complaining about not getting work and not getting paid, so they started giving me work on Sundays. I'd never heard of a contractor going out doing boardups and stuff on Sundays, but they gave me work on Sundays. They called me and said, "We have this boardup." So that was one of the tests. I did it for about a month, and finally, I think they got tired of their inspectors working on Sundays, so they stopped bothering me on Sundays. Then they decided they wanted to check my equipment. Now, I've been doing this for seven years or so, but now they want to check my equipment because the word's gotten around that I don't have the right equipment, I'm late, and I'm not prepared. So then they come out and they look at my equipment, and, you know, I had to have the right equipment to start the job. You know, that's how I got the job with the right equipment. Then they gave me a large motel to do, the Carousel Hotel, that I guess all the windows and the doors, so it's about 60 openings. And they called me that morning, they said, "Hey, we want you to come out and look at this, and we need it done today." I said, "That's a lot of openings in a day. We got it done. We got it done." The next morning, there were three or four inspectors there to look at it. It was like, "Wow, we're surprised you got this done." Okay? But we got it done. So then, now, we're at number one, it says, "No one in the administration, code enforcement, let me know." They were doing an RFP. Nobody. All of a sudden, I find out at the last minute, there's an RFP for my position, and they only want one contractor.
Sure, I hate to interrupt you, but your time is up, but I think...
Oh, I'm only at three minutes. I thought it was 10. I'm sorry.
No, it's three, and we have to respect everyone's time at the podium.
Okay, no, I'm sorry.
No worries, it's not a problem, but I don't know if there's someone you could speak with on this item, or you can come back at 1:30 and continue your...
I'll come back at 1:30. I have more time at 1:30?
Uh-huh.
Because I do want to share, and I'm hoping that everybody will have a chance to look at this, and then what I'll do is I'll try to be brief and say, "Just, if you've looked at this, let me just explain it quickly."
Very good. We'll see you at 1:30, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else wish to comment on any consent item? You'll have three minutes. Seeing none, do you have a motion? Motion by member Chavez, seconded by member Soria. Is there any opposition?
Council President, I'd like to register a no vote on one C.
So noted.
And I will recuse myself from one I.
Well, yes.
Yes.
You and member Soria.
Yes.
For that particular item, as per the announcement by the city attorney. It's on the record. So with that, is there any opposition other than that which has been stated? Seeing none, it passes, the balance passes seven, zero. Thank you very much.
Council President?
Yes.
Can we go back to approving the minutes? I don't think that happened.
Thank you. All right. Are there any changes to the amended minute?
No changes.
Meeting August 15th, 2019. No changes, thank you. Do we have a motion? Member Carbasi, would you like to make a motion? Let me get you involved right away. Have a motion by member Soria, seconded by...
I'll second it.
All right. Member Carbasi seconded it, thank you.
I actually think Carbasi has to recuse himself because he wasn't here when the minutes were generated. I don't think you can vote on this.
All right, then we'll go to member Travis for the second. Any opposition? Passes seven, zero. Thank you. Now we go to our ceremonial presentations.
Council President?
Yes.
Would you entertain a hearing item for C is the first thing this morning? As I have to depart probably around 11:00 AM.
I think we can get you out of here by 11:00 AM. It might motivate the ceremonials to be truly brief. So we'll do those real quick, and everyone's aware of your time sensitive matter, so we'll hopefully go quickly. So first up is the mayor's office and myself for the Restaurant Appreciation Month, Mayor Brand, followed by proclamation of Women's Equality Day by member Soria.
Restaurant people here? Come on up. Lorraine. This is Restaurant Appreciation Month, and we got all these restaurateurs here. Come on up. Restaurants generate more sales tax revenue than any other industry in the state of California, and most of that money goes to our schools. In Fresno, Fresno County alone, restaurants generate about $977 million in sales tax, and for many people, young people, restaurants represent the first opportunity to get their first job. In fact, I believe about 27,000 people in Fresno are employed by restaurants, and so we appreciate it. And the best part about it all is all the great food we get to eat here in the City of Fresno. We got a virtual smorgasbord of choices and delights. We appreciate all the hard work because most of the restaurants are small, family-run businesses that are seven days a week, the entire family, you risk everything to get there. I appreciate that. Council President?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations to each and every one of you on your fantastic enterprises that bring so much to the City of Fresno. I did want to ask Lorraine to say a few words about the Restaurant Achievement Awards. I've gone every year, it is fantastic, it's open to the public, and we encourage everyone to come, and I'll let you give a few details.
Thank you, Council President. We're talking about the California Restaurant Association's Best of the Valley Awards that happened the first Monday of March. It is our Academy Awards for our industry, voted on by our industry, so the winners are voted on by their peers. But the event is open to the public, it's a great opportunity to champion your favorite restaurants and to be able to be supportive of the industry. I'd also like to add that we are so appreciative of September being Restaurant Appreciation Month here in Fresno. Many of the restaurateurs that are here today are independents, also local, and the monies that we contribute through our sales tax into the community goes to fund education, public safety, transportation. But we also are the industry that is generous in giving back to our communities through donations of gift certificates, sponsorships, and money to our nonprofits, to the education system, to the churches, even to the employee unions who are having parties. So we are engaged in our communities, we love our community, and we hope that you'll dine out and support us in September. Thank you.
Fantastic. I've been there so many times, I love it. It's one of the premier events for me every year. With that, we'll have Madam Clerk read the proclamation. The mayor has it, he'll make a presentation to you so everyone can see it. Open it up, Lorraine, you're going to love it.
Whereas California restaurants generate more state sales tax revenue for public schools and teachers than any other industry in the state, and whereas restaurants in the City of Fresno generate more than $977 million per year in taxable sales, and whereas the cell tax generated funds public education statewide along with local police and firefighters, and whereas restaurants provide more first-time job opportunities for our young people entering the workforce and more than 27,000 jobs in the city and county of Fresno, and whereas over 60% of California restaurants are owned by people of color, and whereas California restaurants create more opportunity for women and people of color to become entrepreneurs and managers than any other industry in the state. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, Mayor Lee Brand, Council President Paul Capriolio, and the members of the Fresno City Council do hereby encourage Fresno residents to dine out when they can and to support our city's basic services, opportunities for young people entering the workforce, and our vibrant and diverse entrepreneurs. Restaurant Appreciation Month in the City of Fresno.
May I just add, council members, we just want to thank you. There are many restaurants that are in each of your districts, small mom and pops that are working their fingers to the bone. Councilmember Arias, you understand that because you came from a restaurant family.
Thank you.
And certainly, I want to acknowledge that we support and we acknowledge all of the support you have given all of us in your districts, and thank you.
Thank you for the acknowledgement.
Good morning, everyone. So I have two proclamations to hand out to two great groups here in the community. One will go to the National Women's Political Caucus, so ladies, if you guys want to come on down, and then also from the League of Women Voters of Fresno, we want to invite your group as well to come on down. So I am thrilled this morning to be surrounded by some fabulous and powerful women here in the City of Fresno, and it is a pleasure to be able to recognize Women's Equality Day with both of these great organizations. So here we are, celebrating 99 years this month on Women's Equality Day. If we all kind of revisit history, we know that the 19th Amendment was what gave women's, not only the right to vote, but gave us equal standing with our male counterparts when it came to representation and making sure that we were also part of the democratic process. So there was hundreds and thousands of women, and equally men, that supported this movement, and so we're grateful in recognizing that. I want to personally recognize the two groups that we have here because they have been very instrumental, one, in elevating the issues that impact women here locally, and educating our community and empowering women, and also helping and supporting women as they look at elected office, because we know, obviously, we still have a lot of work to Because we know obviously we still have a lot of work to do, even though we celebrate today 99 years, the issues impacting, um, women like equal pay for equal work or our reproductive rights, right? And just even women being represented at the various levels of government. Today, as you guys can see in this dais, I am the only woman, so we have a lot of work to do. If we go across the street at the Board of County Supervisors, there are no women, so there we have a lot more work to do. But nevertheless, I do want to acknowledge the work that you all do here in the community. I do want to celebrate 99 years of the work that many women that came before us did to allow us to have the ability to vote and have allowed me to have the ability to represent not only women but represent an entire city, um, here, um, in this decade. So I want to just thank all of you for the work and just give you guys a little moment to say anything and maybe if you guys have some festivities coming up.
Maybe if we do.
Thank you very much. Um, we've always been very proud and happy to be supportive of your candidacy through your races. Councilwoman Soria. Uh, the Fresno chapter of the National Women's Political Caucus is having their Women's Equality PAC fundraiser on, uh, September the 18th. Christine Pelosi will be our keynote speaker and we are honoring Senator Anna Caballero, Patience Milrod, who's the executive director of California Legal Services, Central California Legal Services, um, help, Peter Robinson Robertson from Fresno State is our Good Guy Award. We're also...
Desi Wood Jones.
Desi Wood Jones, the, uh, state chair of, um, Buapa. And, um, we are very excited, we are doing our first, what will become an annual award, our Mary Stanley Courage to Run Award. Mary Stanley was, um, we lost her this past year, but she had been instrumental in, uh, the establishment of NWPC and a powerhouse throughout the country for women, supporting women, and we are, um, giving that award to Nazarene Johnson for her courage to run. So thank you so much, we look forward to you being at our event and, um, we're always happy to be included in something that includes the League of Women Voters because they do awesome work in this community.
Thank you so much for this proclamation. And this week we will celebrate Women's Equality Day by honoring Dr. Carol Goldsmith, the president of Fresno City College. Dr. Goldsmith joins a list of women which include Deborah Ikeda, Carrie Donnis, Brandy Orth, Lynn Ashbrook, and others who we've honored as women who have been successful in those parts of our community traditionally populated by men. And so as we enter this, this Tuesday, uh, the first day of the 100th year of the women's right to vote, we certainly look forward to the strength of the women who have led us in the past and those in the future. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And before we have the clerk read the proclamation for the record, I am reminded, as you mentioned, Mary Stanley, someone that fought hard for, for the women here in our community and women nationally, she did say that well-behaved women never make history. So that means that we can't be well-behaved, we have to shake up things around here. With that, Madam Clerk?
Whereas Women's Equality Day was created in 1971 by Congress to celebrate the passage of the 19th Amendment in the US Constitution in 1920 that granted women the right to vote. This year commemorates the 99th anniversary of the beginning of numerous victories for women equality. On this day, we recognize the women who fearlessly fought for suffrage and sparked a movement to advance equal rights. And whereas since then, women have achieved a historically higher voter turnout rate than men. And in 2018, 55% of women eligible to vote cast ballots in the midterm election and a record high compared to 51% of men. And whereas as a result of securing the right to vote and hold office, there have been notable gains in the representation of women in government. As of 2019, there are 25 women seated in the US Senate, 102 women in the House of Representatives, 127 women in Congress, and several women currently running for president. And whereas the city of Fresno recognizes and commends countless women who have served as elected officials at a city, state, and federal level and made contributions significant to laws and policy that further equality. And whereas today we honor the women who fought resilient, resiliently for the right to vote in the face of adversity and the women who like those in the League of Women Voters of Fresno who continue to lead the way in promoting gender equality. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Fresno mayor and city council does hereby proclaim August 22nd, 2019 to be Women's Equality Day in the city of Fresno.
So we'll move on to the next proclamation, which my council colleague, Councilmember Arias, joins me. So we have a special proclamation to the Central Valley Craft Beer, um, to celebrate Central Valley Craft Beer Week, so we want to invite folks that are here, um, today. The pioneer, ooh, I heard that. Now, it, it is amazing, um, to be here this morning to also celebrate the local folks here in Fresno, um, that have been working on crafting great local beer. If you guys haven't had a chance to go downtown to visit not only Taioga but some of the new microbreweries, you guys are missing out. Um, want to make sure you guys, um, go out there and check them out. But I did want to take the time to say and acknowledge, I know Annette has been working on this, um, for some time, but this is the first ever, um, time that we celebrate our local craft breweries by declaring the last week of August as Central Valley Craft Beer Week. Um, so we have a number of, of folks here that are going to be receiving this proclamation. In particular, it is the Central Valley Brewers Guild, who is a new nonprofit organization committed to the prosperity of supporting the craft beer industry here in the city of Fresno. Uh, I am proud to say, I know a few of the folks, um, that are standing, um, here with me, in particular, um, Mr. Cox over here, um, who, um, just was said right now, he has been a pioneer in this business. I know that he started in the Tower District back in the day when it was Butterfield, right? And so he's always behind the scenes, but you guys got to get to know this, um, gentleman, Kevin. He has been awesome and really, um, a pioneer when it comes to craft, craft beer in our community. So I want to pass it on to my colleague so that he can say a few words and then we will read the proclamation.
All my colleagues like beer and that's why we're here. I know some of my colleagues in the back prefer IPAs because they're a little more sophisticated. I am a simple man, Micheladas is what does it for me. Uh, but more importantly, um, the industry provides significant, uh, business, um, and economical impact in our downtown. Our brewery district is growing. You guys have done a really good job of not only managing the business and growing the businesses, but also making sure that folks get home safe and that we don't have significant issues, um, or, uh, anybody's lives are at risk as a result of being able to enjoy some adult time with some good music and some good breweries. So thank you for that and my hope is you'll continue to be a good big brother in the industry and make sure that, that record of safety and support from the general public continues for our downtown brewery district. With that, let's get on to the resolution.
Before we read it, just want to, um, give a shout out to the breweries that are represented here. So it's Bryley's Brewing, Full Circle Brewing, obviously Taioga Sequoia Brewing, Grave View Brewing, and then House of Pen Dragon. So again, thank you for your commitment to this business, your commitment to downtown, to the Tower District as well, so I want to thank you. Annette, do you want to say something very quick?
And I would just like to say that the Central Valley Brewers Guild is, we represent breweries throughout the Central Valley and this is something that is not only important to Fresno, downtown Tower District, but throughout Fresno, throughout the Central Valley, we welcome all of you guys to come out and try some local beer.
Perfect. So if we could get the clerk to read the proclamation for the record.
Whereas each year Beer Week is celebrated nationally, shedding light on the culture and community of craft brewers across the United States. And whereas this year, the Central Valley Brewers Guild will proudly host the valley's first ever beer, craft beer week on the last week of August 2019. Central Valley Craft Beer Week celebrates the independent craft brewers located in the Central Valley. And whereas there are more than 7,000 breweries across the US, almost all are owned by small independent craft brewers. And whereas the Central Valley Craft Beer Week is an opportunity for Central Valley Brewers Guild to acknowledge and celebrate the prosperity and unity of our local brewers. And whereas locally, excellent craftsmen and women are operating in a manner that reflects the highest standards, responsibility, and encouragement for safe consumption, partnering with the city of Fresno, the Downtown Fresno Partnership, the Fresno Police Department, and consistently advocate for prevention of drinking and driving. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Fresno mayor and city council does hereby proclaim August 25th through the 31st to be Central Valley Craft Beer Week in the city
Congratulations to all of you. We appreciate you being here. You've earned that award, you know that. All right, we'll go to council comments and reports next before we start our regular business. Anybody you want to punch up? Council comments?
Couple of comments, so just an announcement, I will be having a District 1 community meeting west of Highway 99 next Thursday evening. It starts at 6:00 PM and it will be at the Highway City Community Resource Center. It's the brand new, um, Community Resource Center which is located on Polk and Shaw Avenues. We will be discussing investments west of the 99. And those are it for me, thank you.
Okay, Member Carbasi?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just want to make a brief comment that, um, it is my first day here officially and this last week, um, I've gotten a chance to know, I'm proud to call you colleagues now, and I really look forward to working with you. I know that we may have differences here and there, but the bottom line is every one of you cares about your district and that's something the public may not realize, but I've seen it behind the scenes. And to our council president, your staff, and you have been amazing in helping me transition in eight days and I really appreciate that, you're an absolute gentleman and a Fresno State grad.
That's right.
And to Laura, Molly, Andrew, and to our support staff, Marisol, and, um, oh my gosh, I'm in so much trouble now.
You are in trouble.
Cindy, thank you so much.
Thank you very much for those kind words. Member Arias? More kind words?
Yes, um, thank you, Council President Caprileo. You are not only a gentleman, but you're a scholar, at least at times that you agree with me. Uh, for, um, our new council colleague, Mr. Carbasi, I just want to say, um, a simple thank you to your father. You clearly have raised a gentleman, intelligent young man who is driven to serve the community and, um, whenever I engage in a robust conversation and dialogue with him, I'm going to be reminded that, um, he was well-raised by a gentleman also and that, um, I want to thank you for making sure that he's on this dais with us. It's important to me that this dais reflects the community and having one more, uh, person who understands our diverse, um, city and residents and the struggles of the previous generation is a welcoming, um, feature to our council and to our city. So, Mr. Carbasi Senior, thank you. And, Mr. Carbasi Junior, best of luck and welcome to Fresno.
Thank you.
Okay, the screen is clear. I had an opportunity to be part of a partnership, a partnership which was history in the making. The Mattie Institute has been a foundation, uh, a, a backbone for Fresno State University and they've done great things in various areas of politics and leadership. So through President Castro, Fresno State, uh, formed a coalition, collaboration with UC Merced, CSU Bakersfield, and CSU Stanislaw. This partnership will not only benefit students, but it will help develop a next generation of civic leaders. So these students that are part of the Mattie Institute and the program will have opportunities for internships from Washington DC to right here in our own council chamber. So, uh, this is a bold way to create a pathway of leadership from the valley to fight for the valley. Uh, as many of you know, there's a fire in my district in an apartment complex, uh, many families and students lost everything. Larry Salinas is here from the university. Larry, I'd like to have you give us a few, um, bits of information, how we can help those that have been displaced by this tragic fire, uh, over the weekend. This is Larry Salinas, uh, introduce yourself, please, and...
Good morning, council and Council President Caprileo. Larry Salinas in the office of the president of Fresno State. Um, I just wanted to take a moment to, uh, first congratulate Councilman Carbasi and, um, wish you all the best. And I also want to take this opportunity to thank, uh, Council President Caprileo and in particular his staff, Laura Rios and Molly Marquez, uh, who stepped up immediately when that fire took, uh, place on Sunday evening, uh, the first, uh, the day before the new semester started. And, um, also thank the first responders, in particular Chief Donnis and her fire crews that were, uh, there on the scene, uh, trying to put out a three-alarm fire and we appreciate them and the police officers that, uh, directed traffic in that, at that time. The, um, the fire resulted in having about 15 people displaced, um, including 11 students that are in, uh, on-campus housing at Fresno State and one staff member. And we have established a Good Samaritan Fund and I believe I shared that link with Councilmember Caprileo's staff and I, and I believe the rest of your staff, um, council members. And so if you need more information on that, that is probably the most direct way that we can help as a community, that the community can help Fresno State and those that were displaced, uh, for, um, looking to restore, uh, not only their, uh, their livelihood, but, uh, their basic belongings, furniture, clothing, things like that. And I also want to thank, uh, Assemblymember Jim Patterson, his office offered to help with, uh, looking into state documents that may have been lost in the fire, um, driver's license on the federal side, uh, social security cards, things like that. So we appreciate that and on behalf of President Castro and our cabinet, want to thank you, Councilman Caprileo and the rest of the city.
Thank you, Larry. And in that vein, those that wish to help, you can contact the Central Valley Red Cross, that number is 455-1000, 455-1000, and/or by visiting Fresno State at crowdfunding.fresnostate.edu. That's a long one, but C-R-O-W-D-F-U-N-D-I-N-G dot FresnoState.edu. We'll be happy to take any and all contributions in any form that you have to help these students. It's a heck of a way to start your first day of school, to lose everything and then, uh, we appreciate all your help. Larry, thank you for being here and thanks for letting us work with you and the university will continue.
Thank you very much, appreciate the partnership.
Thank you, sir. Uh, I wanted to thank the Fresno Police Department, uh, the Northeast Section for hosting a Coffee with Cops. Uh, I want to thank Starbucks at First and Shaw, they allowed us to kind of take over the Starbucks. We had lots of people coming in there, uh, spending time, uh, talking with, sharing stories with our police department. It was a fantastic event. We've done that many, many times and we need to do it many more times. It's, uh, really, really helpful and as I speak about Coffee with Cops, uh, I see Danny Kim coming into our chamber and he's, uh, he has his own Starbucks apron, that's how active he is with Coffee with Cops. It's green with the logo, they've got his name on it, so, uh, congratulations Danny and, and thank you for, uh, arranging those sorts of events in District 4. Lastly, um, a very tragic moment, uh, occurred recently, so I'd like to adjourn this meeting in loving memory of Police Chief David Werthe, he is the chief of police at Fresno State. Uh, he and I, I was a young DA and he was a young deputy sheriff bailiff in the courthouse and we sort of paralleled our, our careers and, uh, it was great working with... we sort of paralleled our careers, and it was great working with him at Fresno State. He's a great, great person, and will be so missed by so many people. So we want to adjourn today's meeting in memory of that fantastic person. So thank you very much. With that, with that, we'll go to an item that Member Esparza has asked me to bring forward. And I lost the item number. 4C. So we will go to item 4C. Here we go. Resolution advancing the, quote, "Help us, help Fresno," close quote initiative. This item is subject to the veto. It's sponsored by Councilmember Brettafield. Sir, you have the floor.
Thank you. And I will not, not be long. Council, you remember five months ago or so, we had an initiative that was brought forward that was called Stop, and it failed because there were people concerned about what they said criminalizing people who were very generous in handing money to people out the window. They felt that was not the right approach. And so my staff and I, along with others, including Police Chief Jerry Dyer and Councilmember Arias, looked at coming up with a positive way of addressing the need to educate people not to be giving money to these panhandlers because it keeps them on the streets. It doesn't help. There are better ways to help them, and we want to eliminate panhandling altogether. Panhandlers, I think as most people know and people who work with panhandlers, the majority of them are drug-addicted, alcoholic. Many of them are scammers and con artists. The police have had many interactions where they have thousands and thousands of dollars. And so most of these folks are not simply homeless. Many of them are not. And they have caused all kinds of problems with businesses, along with some of the homeless. They are causing destruction of their property. Some of these businesses are having to leave their business because of the problems. They're opening water faucets along the building, destroying fences, defecating, urinating, creating all kinds of frankly destruction for people in the community who are trying to make a living. Now, for many of these folks, it is a drug addiction problem, a mental health problem. Some will say that it's a homeless, a housing problem. I'm not convinced that it truly is a housing problem. I think a lot of it has to do with drugs and alcohol, mental health issues, and frankly weakening of criminal laws through propositions like 4757 and AB109 where we release these folks out onto the street. We no longer have any ability within the criminal system, as we did before, to tell somebody who's drug addicted, you know, get help with this drug problem or you go to jail. That's, that's out the window. It no longer exists, and not surprisingly, we see more and more of them on the street. So we came together to try to find a way to educate the public that giving people money who are begging for it keeps them in their drug addiction, doesn't help them. I think it makes those who do it feel better, but it's not helping. And there are plenty of people who are in the community who do provide help, who actually can help, but giving money to those folks, the panhandlers, doesn't help. Giving money to those organizations like Rescue Mission and Pavarello House and Marjorie Mason Center and others, I don't want to leave anybody out, will help. So the sign, as you can see, we came up with was "Help us, help Fresno." It says, "Say no to panhandling." It encourages people to give to charitable organizations, and it also has a phone number on there for people who truly want help. Now, we know that usually less than 1% truly want help, and it's hard to help somebody who doesn't want help, but we, there are people who do. And so there's a phone number where they can contact the Rescue Mission and get help. The sign is a very positive message. It's an educational message. It encourages people to seek help through the Rescue Mission. It encourages people to donate. Just donate, do not donate to those who are out panhandling because it will not help them. Now, these signs, we looked at putting out in the private sector when, we brought this before the council in April, and it failed on a 3-3 vote. The mayor, along with myself, as well as the District Two candidates, all of them, including Councilman Carbasi, expressed support for this plan of having private businesses use these signs. And River Park has used eight or nine of these signs at their own cost. And they've put them out, you can see them out by Chick-fil-A, In-N-Out, the Starbucks, and they have proven successful. We have data that shows that the panhandling has significantly mitigated where those signs are at. Now, are you able to put up, you can't use it? Okay, okay. Well... Oh, there's a sign up there. That's a long, I don't know if, does it work now? Okay. So that's by Abbey and Minaretts, where if you come out of Home Depot and you turn right, that's Abbey, and you go straight, it's Minaretts. If you turn right on Minaretts, it would be Colt. That's what was going on before we put the signs out. That was more of that. Now we have those signs put out. You can see the sign there, and we have not seen the panhandling. The panhandlers see the signs, the people see the signs, and that's generally the way the corner looks today. We have had that throughout River Park. These signs are proving effective. People are beginning to understand this is not the way to go. And we have signs at other, you can see some of the other signs that we have, where they're located throughout River Park. Again, a very positive sign. People are understanding there's better ways to help these folks, but giving them money directly is the wrong way to help these folks. So it's been successful. It's certainly part of the solution. It's not obviously the complete solution. And in this resolution, those council members know where the panhandling problems are. They can put those signs out like we have here, or you can put them out in intersections, and I intend to put them out in intersections should this pass today. So people in intersections will see this. This is not the way to help. There's a better way to help. And these signs are not very expensive. They're about $100, $125 each. And those private businesses that want to put them out, they'll put them out at their own expense. And as I said, they've been very, very successful. So with that, this is a way to address the panhandling problem. The City of Fresno also needs to have a greater public relations campaign educating people. This is really an all-hands-on-deck effort. We all have to be working to educating the public that giving these folks money is not the way. This has been effective, and so I am asking the council today to support this, and I look forward to a positive vote so we can have a positive message that goes out into the community. And again, I want to acknowledge the mayor for his support. I want to acknowledge Police Chief Jerry Dyer, who was instrumental in this, and I appreciate, frankly, the Fresno Bees Editorial Board's support of this, recognizing this is an important effort to, to move forward. Thank you.
Council, in absence of Council President, I will run the meeting. Anybody like to speak on this item from the council? Councilmember Esparza, you have the floor.
Yes. So we, we have had this debate before here in these chambers. You know, my, my position has not changed. Still not supportive. I appreciate the demonstrations and the anecdotal examples. You know, I, I, just visually seeing it and thinking about the behavioral psychology of people, I believe it does help where we put them. But I'm really not sure about the net benefit in terms of us continuing the shuffle game. And so I know you said it's only one part of the solution. I, I think we need to continue to focus on the structural solutions and pulling down the cash, the money from the state that we've, that we've been doing so. So I won't, I mean, just like last time, I will not be supporting the resolution today. Thank you.
I'll just, can I?
Councilmember Soria, you have the floor.
I, I want to make a motion to oppose this. And I don't know if you can, is that a, can I put a motion like that on the floor?
Is there already a motion to approve?
There's no motion.
Then you can.
So I'll make a motion to oppose. I don't agree with, with this, the sign deal.
Soria, do we have a second? Is there a motion on the floor? Is there a second?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll second. I'll call for the question.
All right.
We can take a vote electronically?
Can I amend the motion?
You may ask for a friendly amendment or make a motion to amend the pending motion.
Yeah, I'd like to make a amendment to adopt the resolution as it's indicated in the staff report.
That's effectively a substitute motion, so if you get a second, then you would vote on that first.
There's a second.
There's a second. Let's take a vote.
No, we need to wait for Councilmember Caprero.
Well, we can take, you're running them.
Let's call for the vote.
We'll take a vote.
All those in favor of the substitute?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Member Esparza? No? No? Dies, 3-3. Now we have a motion on the floor. Is there a motion for, I'll call for the vote for a Member Soria's motion?
I have a question regarding this. Mr. Caprero is here. Can we delay until we locate where he's at?
Well, Vice President Arias is the acting president. Well, here he comes anyway.
Councilmember, Council President Caprero is back on the floor, so he has the meeting. Thank you.
With Councilmember Caprero back on the floor, can I return to making an amendment?
Well, right now, the pending motion is to reject the item.
So there was a motion and a second?
Yes.
Okay, I think protocol says we take the motion first and vote on it.
Well, the, the motion to amend was not approved. There's a motion to reject that's pending. Now, if that motion fails to pass, another motion can be made, too.
Very well. Are we clear?
Yep.
Okay, all those that support Member Soria's motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose?
No.
So we have three ayes, four nays. The motion fails.
And I'd like to make a motion then to...
So I still have the floor.
I'm sorry.
Right, because of my motion. I want to make a competing motion. So I have been opposed to this proposal from the very beginning. It's no secret.
Point of order before you do. Can I make an emotion now, or do I have to wait?
I have the floor.
Right. Councilmember Soria has the floor. You may make a procedural motion if there's a point of order, but not a main motion. No. She has the floor right now.
So, as I said, and I'll go back to my comments, so I don't, I agree actually with Councilmember Esparza's points. One of the things that I am concerned about is about the message that it's sending. I get that there are instances and circumstances that, where we don't want our residents to contribute to the panhandlers. I don't think that this is the right message. I have a competing proposal. If we want to go that way, I think there's an opportunity to send a positive, a real positive message. And I don't know if you want to put this up. Brianna, can you put this? And I'll pass this to my colleagues.
So I think that if we are going to approve something that we're going to put up in the entire city, and we actually want the message to be positive, if that is really the goal in creating a campaign, it should be a campaign that is much more comprehensive, where we would pretty much send a message of where people need to contribute, and that this is really a campaign of change. So there's a big distinction with the red signs and how it has, you know, the no panhandling sign, which I believe sends a negative message if we're really trying to stay to a positive message. So I will make a motion to put this type of sign, have the ability to put this sign rather than, or one of these signs rather than the one that is being proposed. So that's my motion.
So to be clear, the motion is to approve the item, but with a different, the different sign.
Okay. Member Chavez, you have punched up?
I think oftentimes we get into these conversations where the perception is that we're doing something that we're not. When I read this, I thought to myself, oh, here we go again. But this is probably one of the most innocuous ordinances that we could possibly put. As I understand this, and I want to make sure that this is clear, this is 100% discretionary to the council member of the district. So if that council member chooses not to put them in their district, they can do that. Is that correct?
Exactly correct.
Okay. Another thing of this is this, I noticed that there is no funding source for this. So this would be out of discretionary funds from each council member district. Is that correct?
If you, if you put them up in the public way, what I would encourage, if private businesses want to do it, as we've done in my district, that the private business will fund the signs or the poll.
Well, this is very simple. I think oftentimes we tend to overthink, and if a council member does not want this in their district, don't pay for it. Don't put it in your public right-of-way. I'm sure that every council member such as myself will have this conversation with their residents, with their business owners, and see if it's a good fit. Great. If it's not, then don't do it. I mean, this, this is very simple to me.
Member Arias?
Just have a couple of questions. Councilmember Brettafield, you indicate that you have data and research to support that this has been working?
Yes.
What is that?
Well, I don't have the data. It's, the data is the property of River Park. And so River Park is not going to share that data. They've told me that they have the data. They are absolutely convinced that these signs are helping them, but I've asked them to come and share that data, but that's proprietary, and they're not going to share that.
Okay. Just, I just want to remind the, the council that just a couple of weeks ago, we had a conversation about advanced pace, and we insisted that we wanted a research-based solution, and that we needed to provide the research and the data to support that solution. In this case, there's been references to the data being supportive, but we don't, we don't have access to data, and we're not allowed to get access to data. That creates a difficulty for me when we're setting citywide policy, not to even have a right to basic information on whether or not this initiative has worked. My second question to legal counsel is, if this ordinance is passed, I know it reads that in consultation with the council member, the signs would be put up. Would this give private businesses the right to put up a sign if they wish to pay for it on our public intersections, as currently drafted?
Only if permitted by the council member of that district.
So the council member can block any private business from putting it in any public intersection?
In, in the public right-of-way, correct.
In the public right-of-way. But in their current private property, they would still be allowed to do so?
Yes, they have a right to put signs on their own property.
Thank you.
Screen is clear. I did not hear a second to that motion?
She made...
Your motion? I didn't hear a second to your amended motion, if there is one.
Is there a second to the motion to replace the signs?
Seeing none, the motion fails.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion.
Now we go to Member Brettafield.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the report as indicated. And just one comment in terms of the data. I mean, I agree with the data, but you know, this is River Park's proprietary data. I wish they would share it because they're absolutely convinced of it. But there's something else called visual data, which is just looking at pictures, as I've shown, and looking at when somebody was there before a sign went out, and now the signs are there and the corners are clean. That's pretty clear data to me. So having said that, for the question.
Okay. Before we do any of that, we're going to go to the public. That's our duty and obligation as elected officials. So now we're open for public comments. So if you wish to make a comment on this...
Point of order.
Please come forward, and you'll have three minutes. Please give us your name and address, and the microphone will be yours. I have a card for the famous Howard K. Watkins. Good morning, sir.
Thank you. Council President, members of the council, Howard Watkins, 1785 West Lud Lane, Fresno. First, Councilmember Brettafield, I appreciate your efforts to do something to deal with the situation. I find it unfortunate that Councilmember Soria's motion was not seconded because I find that a much more positive. I shop at Costco and, and Home Depot a lot, so I'm very familiar with the intersection. And one of the things that amazes me about the people on the corner, and you saw the lady that has the cup on a stick, they're not making minimum wage, and they're out there in 90-degree temperatures desperate to come up with some income. Now, whether to support drugs or not, I don't know, but that's a hell of a way to raise money for a drug habit. And what the council needs to focus on is coming up with the funding and the solutions to help all the people that are homeless. When the encampments were destroyed, which were ugly to look at and Council President, members of the council, Howard Watkins, 1785 West Lud Lane, Fresno. First, Councilmember Brettafield, I appreciate your efforts to do something to deal with the situation. I find it unfortunate that Councilmember Soria's motion was not seconded, because I find that a much more positive. I shop at Costco and Home Depot a lot, so I'm very familiar with the intersection, and one of the things that amazes me about the people on the corner, and you saw the lady that has the cup on a stick, they're not making minimum wage, and they're out there in 90-degree temperatures desperate to come up with some income. Now, whether to support drugs or not, I don't know, but that's a hell of a way to raise money for a drug habit, and what the council needs to focus on is coming up with the funding and the solutions to help all the people that are homeless. When the encampments were destroyed, which were ugly to look at and not a good thing to come driving through, that dispersed the homeless throughout the city and county area, metropolitan area, and so that's what really spread, I believe, to the businesses that were not downtown. I'm not sure that Mayor Swearengen was aware of that potential outcome when she directed that activity. The one thing I would like to see the council do is to help publicize that either that phone number or a list of the organizations to encourage the residents of Fresno to contribute money to these programs. That's a very positive way to do it, whether it can go out with utility bills, a separate mailing, public service announcements, maybe City College or Fresno State would help develop a PSA that could run on the TV stations. I'm pretty sure the major networks would run it, but resources is the critical problem. That's no news to any of you, but emphasizing where people can help, I think, would be a very positive way regardless of what happens on the signs. Thank you.
Thank you, Howard. That's actually a great option. We often hear about problem identification, but not many options or solutions, and you presented what seems to be a viable option. Thank you. Appreciate it. I have no more cards, so now it's open to the general public. Please come forward, and you'll, please give us your name and address, and then you'll have three minutes, and you can pull that microphone right down to where you can speak directly into it.
Good morning, councilmembers and employees. My name is Jean Johnson. I do live at 2963 Ashcroft in Clovis. I just moved here from Ventura County, and let me tell you, I love Fresno. I never thought I would. Wholeheartedly, I think, yes, it can be much cleaner. I do agree with Brettafield with do not support the panhandling, but it takes common sense to keep your city clean everywhere, and people should know by now, do not give to panhandling. We all need help. The city of Fresno, some departments have failed you. They need to start cleaning your beautiful city. I love Blackstone, especially the south side, but this panhandling sign should not dictate to the people to give to charities. There are some charities out there that do not give to the people. The people supporting the charities are in it for themselves and their administrative staff. Some homeless do not want to complete the necessary government paperwork for help. They're afraid. They don't want to be found. And how do I know this? My sister. She didn't want to complete no form to be helped. She wanted to do it her way, not the government's way, no dictation from anybody, in the same manner that that sign is a great sign, no, say no to panhandling, but I could do without the other half of the sign, give to charities. I understand you all have different ideas, but please, let's work together to clean up Fresno, and lastly, I love your sign, and God, we trust. He helps us all. Thank you for being able to speak to the council diocese today, and everyone. Thank you.
Welcome to Fresno, sort of Clovis after Lucky, but we're, we're making a headway. Speaking of that, I did want to acknowledge another elected official in the audience, Nathan Maxi in the back. He's a good friend, and he serves his area very, very well, which includes my home, so thank you. Next, anybody, I see a young lady here. Would you like to come forward and make some comments on this item? You can pull up microphone right down to eye level, and you'll have three minutes.
Number one, good morning, everyone.
Adam, hold on just one second. We're going to get you a hand mic, because the, the device can't amplify your voice well enough, so we want to hear what you have to say.
Good morning, everybody, and we need to praise Jesus for waking us up. I disagree with Councilmen, but whatever name it, I happen to live in River Park, on Blackstone, and need, I have decided there for four years, and I meet homeless people, whether or not they're by choice, they're there by their parents dying, their brothers dying, they had nowhere to go but the street, so we need to remember God said about Cain and Abel, am I my brother's keeper? Yes, we are. Don't you think some people would love to take a shower, eat their food, and not sit in the hot sun? We need to get this city back to Jesus. He's the only way, one of a change, I put love in our heart, which will change our mind. I am in it here because of drinking and drugs, but Jesus did not let me die after being in a coma two years. I did still work for daughter, parenting, and it, and they said I'd be brain dead, but God Almighty said, no, no. So, can you God, please have mercy on our homeless people, and we need to build some kind of home for them. Thank you. I pray you guys will consider my amendment, no matter physical.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. H, thank you for your help, sir. I did have a card here I overlooked. It's from our Chief of Police, Jerry Dyer. Please come forward and express your opinion.
Chief Jerry or Jerry Dyer?
You're pragmatic.
It's a real question.
Inside joke there.
It's a real question.
All right, let's stay on the issue, please. The floor is yours.
Yeah, I wanted to stand up here and support Councilmember Brettafield's proposal. I supported it when it was originally proposed. I continue to support it today. I think in law enforcement, we know from experience that when you give to many of these individuals that are out there on the street, we're simply enabling them to continue in that current lifestyle, and that lifestyle oftentimes is addiction, addiction to alcohol or, and/or addiction to, to drugs. This ordinance is simply, encourages individuals to not give to those individuals that are out there on the streets, especially those that are on street corners, that oftentimes serve as a distraction to motorists, but to give to nonprofits. And so, I did not support a previous ordinance that was brought before this council regarding this issue, but it was as a result of the enforcement that was attached, enforcement of those giving, as well as enforcement of the law against those who asked or received that money. So, this is simply an awareness campaign. I think it's good for our city. I can say firsthand, I, too, have been to River Park. I have seen a noticeable difference since they posted these signs. Some things you just don't have in terms of data, but I can also tell there's, there's a 7-Eleven store northwest Fresno that took it upon their self to put up an A-frame sign in their parking lot. This is an area that I've been visited many, many times, and in fact, I've seen homeless and, and panhandling around that business many times, but I never saw the sign. The last two times I visited, the sign was present out front. There wasn't a single person in the parking lot panhandling. So, I know it works, and I also know that the business encouraged people not to give, but they did it through that sign. So, that's simply all we're doing as a city. We're encouraging people not to give to those individuals to enable the lifestyle, especially at those intersections, and it also gives an opportunity for people to give to charitable organizations. So, I fully support the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public wish to come forward? Please give us your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
My name's Jaime Loza. I've been homeless. Panhandling, I don't agree with people giving people money either, but I think it goes back to what that woman was saying. You know, Fresno County, the, you know, these guys got really good subjects, really good subjects, and one of them is, is, you know, homeless or litter bugs or panhandlers are going to be that, okay? But we pay taxes for Fresno city workers to clean up the city, clean the city. You know, I've been keeping an eye on downtown, right here on the strip. Nobody's cleaned it. I don't know how long. Get, you know, all we're asking is get pressure washers. We hire, we pay taxes. Have, now, I know somebody's supposed to be doing the job. Tell them to get pressure washers and clean the bus stops right, the train station, everywhere. Just clean it up right, clean everything up right, and the, the people asking for money, whether they need it or not, that, you know, like I said, I've always worked for my money, okay? I'm not going to get it in that, but have the Fresno city workers that were paying out of our taxes clean up right.
Anyone else wish to come forward? Name, address, three minutes. Thank you very much.
Brandy, Newt, Vegas, 713 East Andrews. Rushed here on my way to work, getting ready for work, when we found out that it's got moved up, and there's a lot of people who are going to come, including a, a couple who are using signs that we're going to be here this afternoon, and unfortunately, you can't hear from them. I was going to bring some art to show you, the idea of art of, to express my idea, but I'll keep moving. It's really easy. I appreciate the great difficulty of the issue that you're facing from many directions. It's not easy, but I think a major component of success is to better understand the needs out on the street. My concern in this resolution is based on incomplete and false perceptions of why some, but, and maybe all, most people are out there, and this will be ineffective to real change. Yes, there are those who fit the list that have been presented, but almost everyone I met has been seeking help. They've been trying harder and longer than you know, and should not be lumped into these common beliefs about drug addicts, career panhandlers, or homeless by choice. They feel frustrated because there are gaps and setbacks. They're exhausted the means they have. Many have homes, but don't have much because they're elderly or disabled. They're trying to find jobs. They're waiting for disability. They're waiting for housing. They're trying. A man in District Two named Bobby, for instance, is out there with a wheelchair. He told me that he's recovering from back injury, and hopes he can get a job with the previous employer when he's better. I asked, and he said that he's tried to seek help many times and didn't get follow-through, and it takes years. He only makes like $3 to $30, and that's the case with most people. It's very, very little. Another woman in District Two named Clara told me that she's on the waiting list to get shelter at the Pavarello House and makes enough to be able to eat in the meantime. There's a man who's working, who wants work by his own disability and seeking work, but needs help in the meantime. These are closer to stories that I hear out there, people trying to make, and me, and the premise that a major barrier to the effort of the city and local nonprofits are people giving to panhandlers that dissuade them. It's problematic, simplistic, and unsubstantiated. It put blame on those who need help. We're all working, instead of addressing the multitude of complex reasons why everyone's there, we're all working on it, but it directly blames, and it indirectly blames them. We don't get anywhere by putting blame in the wrong place. When we start with the wrong premise for someone out on the streets holding signs, but we can't get to the right conclusion, I ask you to instead keep working on what Help Us Help Fresno Meet can look like, and reach out directly to the panhandlers yourself. Use the HEAP committee to, to include advocates, but also those who are being affected by this. Let them be part of the discussion and the possible solutions that you may not be aware of, and plus the human contact and recognition that is, that is beneficial and direct giving. It would be significant for you to be out there. A very positive element of this outreach, keep going after that, and like a lot of our homeless advocates wanted to say, keep pursuing low barrier housing to those who are homeless. Turning Point opened a few low barrier, and, and they got full, which means if you build them, they will come. I know it's going over, but also keep pursuing affordable housing, ways to, to surmount the obstacles. There are people who are disabled and elderly who are on a long waiting, more, more housing for them, because they're on the long waiting list out there, and it takes at least six-
Brandy, your time is up, please.
So, please, keep working with our new council member to seek something that would be a real change, a real sustainable change, and seek us for, seek the, those who are out there for the answer, and, and come back to this.
For the record, we did the meeting at this time to accommodate Member Esparsa's 11 o'clock appointment. So, with that in mind, sir, you have the floor. Name, address, three minutes.
Yo, peace, everybody. My name is Cesar Casamayor. I'm a community organizer with Fresno Valley Tsunidos. I also used to work at the SOS program with Joe Martinez, and my experiences have been that when it's 1 o'clock at night, in the morning, young people have nowhere to go. You go to T Street, the door is closed, you got nothing to do. So, if a young brother that's starving, or a young sister that's starving is asking for money because they want to get something to eat, like at a 7-Eleven, where you see that a lot happening downtown specifically, as a human being, I'm going to help that young brother and that sister out. I, I don't think I should be penalized for helping another person that's been struggling. I've been there myself. I know what it is to be walking around the streets, and I think that it needs to be more understanding and compassion, and really look more into what these programs are not being able, what are the limitations of the programs that we have currently right now, specifically when it deals with youth homelessness, that we don't have available. I think having the small amount of number that we have of beds available for, for youth, and now I'm learning that youth cannot even have access to hotel vouchers when they go through the, through the, the shelter on T Street. I think there's a lot of flaws that young people are going to go to whatever means necessary to be able to get something to eat, and if they're asking for people for money, even if they, I've seen young people do clean cars, whatever they got to do to survive, that's what they're going through, and only putting more sentencing on suffering communities already, I think that that's not humane. I think that we need to look at that from a different perspective. I understand God and everything and all that, that's cool, but God ain't going to help somebody get something to eat at the immediate time when they need it, and I think that we need to be looking more at our programs, and I hope that we, we improve the programs that we have thus far in the city. So, more young people, specifically youth who are couch surfing, going from place to place, because that's a reality that a lot of people don't know, they are homeless. They just have friends that are able to give them some time to go eat at their house or whatever, but they're out there in the streets, and they are looking for jobs. There's not jobs available. We know this already, and so I ask, from a perspective of experiencing, working with youth who are homeless in the city of Fresno through the EOC, who is a great, great program, big ups to Joe Martinez. I want to be clear on that, but there is limitations that we don't have available, and I think it's important to work to have more access, more funding for programs that actually impact youth and also help youth advocate, because not many people out here, that's another perspective as well, not many people have the availability or the knowledge on how to help young people be civically engaged from the homeless community and population, and I love the work that Des Martinez is doing, and I think that's a great example on engaging community folks from that. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to come forward at this time and address the issue? Please do so. Seeing none, we'll bring it back up here, and I think there was a call for the question. We'll do electronic voting. Those who support the motion of, there's a yes vote, those that oppose a no vote, so if you'll please register your vote.
There's, there's no second on that.
Sorry?
There's no second on the motion.
Second.
There wa, I thought there was. Well, we have a motion. Thank you. We have a motion by Member Brettafield, second, and by Member Carbosse, and the record is clear, so yes is supportive, and no is non-supportive. Let's please register your vote. The screen will give the results. Pass is four, two, four, three, sorry. Members Soria, Arias, Esparsa voting no. Thank you very much. Now, we'll move on to- Item 3A, actions pertaining to the SP grant resources, proposed payouts of four home investment partnership funded loans, and that is planning and development. We have our director coming forward now.
Good morning, Council President, Councilmember Jennifer Clark, Director, Planning and Development. The item before you today is a recommendation to approve home loan payouts and waiver of accrued interest. In 2005, the city approved a $1.5 million home loan to a developer, ADI, for the development of the Geneva Village Apartments, a 142-unit affordable housing project in District Three. In 2007, the city approved a $2 million home loan to ADI for the development of the Tanager Springs Number One Apartments, a 74-unit affordable housing project in District Five. And then also in 2007, the city approved a $2.6 million home loan to ADI for the development of the Tanager Springs Two Apartments.
Director, if I may interrupt, I'd like to make a motion to approve. And I do want to thank you for all the time that you spent with us and staff and the developer. It's been more time than I expected, and you've been very thorough upfront and clear and concise about the concerns that we had. So thank you all for doing that for us.
Great.
Anyone in the public wish to come forward and address this? Please do so. You'll have three minutes after giving us your name and address. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any opposition to the motion? Passes seven, zero. Thank you. Let's go to the timed items. 10 a.m., item number one, hearing to adopt resolutions and ordinances to annex territory in District Six. This is Public Works. Good morning, Andrew.
Good morning, councilmembers. I'm Andrew Benelli with the Public Works Department. Here with the Community Facilities District, public hearing. This particular hearing is for the west side of North Millbrook, south of Nies Avenue. It is in Council District Six. This is a small subdivision with eight lots. It's being developed by Old California, Inc., and the assessment is $588.75 per lot. We have received the ballots. The landowners are in support. Staff recommends approval after a public hearing.
Appreciate that. Anyone in the public wish to address this? Please step forward. You'll have three minutes. We'll bring it back here. It is in District Six. Make a motion to approve. Motion by Member Brettafield, second, and by Member Chavez. Any opposition? We have one question by Member Arias, although he did not punch up.
Sorry. Can you confirm for the record that this is going to have the automatic escalator to keep up with the cost of maintaining those districts?
This does have an automatic escalator. The escalation increases the maximum tax, but the amount of the assessment that's actually charged is based on our costs for our contractor and some administration fees. So there is an escalator that's built into the maximum tax. Thank you.
Is there any opposition to the motion? Seeing none. Did you want to cast a vote, Members Soria? The 10 o'clock, item number one? Yes, okay. Passes seven, zero. Thank you much. Item number two is a hearing to adopt resolutions regarding annexing territory in District One.
Thank you, Council President Capriolio. Andrew Benelli again with Public Works. This is a subdivision on North Polk Avenue between Gettysburg and Ashland. It's a small subdivision with 16 lots. It's being developed by Joseph Crown Construction and Development, Inc. The maximum tax per lot is $486.19. We have received the ballots. The property owners are in support. Staff is recommending your approval after a public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you much. We have a motion by Member Soria. I'll second it. We'll take it to the public. Anyone out there want to come forward and speak on this? This is the time. All right, up here, we'll have a motion in a second. Is there any opposition? Passes seven, zero. Next is a hearing to consider plan amendment on Copper Avenue, North Chestnut, and North Willow Avenues in District Six.
Good morning, Council President, councilmembers. This morning you'll be considering, my name is Jose Valenzuela, I'm with the Planning and Development Department. This morning you'll be considering the subject Plan Amendment, Rezone, Plan Development Permit, Tentative Track Map, and the related environmental assessment. No changes have been made to staff's report. Staff has prepared a presentation at your request and is available for any questions.
Fantastic presentation. I said it's a fantastic presentation. Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone in the public wish to address this? Please come forward. I see someone coming this way. If you'll give us your name and address, then you'll have three minutes. Welcome to City Hall. Brianna, he has a card right behind you. Thank you.
Good morning, Council President, members of the council. My name is Ara Kellerisian, and I'm here on behalf of Lennar Homes, who's the applicant for this project, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Member Arias, anyone else in the public want to come forward before we have council comments? So no one's coming forward? We'll bring it back here, and Member Arias has punched up. This is in District Six.
Thank you. Just have some questions for staff. The proposed rezon would change the initial rezon that was approved, right? And my understanding is you're going to add more housing density and remove some of the original office space that was designated for that area?
Right, more additional housing, and you're removing the business park component of it and changing it to mixed use.
What was the rationale for that change?
That was a request by the applicant.
Applicant, what's the rationale for that change? I'm assuming the business park envisioned that people would work and live in the same area, therefore reducing the amount of car traffic going back and forth on that road.
Please give us your name again for the record.
Yes, Ara Kellerisian, here on behalf of Lennar Homes and the applicant. I also work with the Rakuti family, who is the property owner. The corner, approximately 10 acres, that was designated business park, that was done in the last general plan cycle as part of the, basically the boundary of the current packing house and the yard that was associated with the packing house. And so moving it to a mixed use, land use, gives us flexibility in the future to, which is more of the packing house corner itself, the facilities, that's about five acres, and that would be designated mixed use, which allows us to do, it may be commercial, it could be some retail, and it could be some multifamily uses. And we actually are developing, the Rakuti family is developing a project at Shepherd and Willow, which is within that mixed use designation. So given that the planning department has created these land uses, that gives us a lot of flexibility moving into the forward to bring those types of uses, and that was the rationale. The business park designation was really a carryover of the current packing house uses that are under operation. And so for the foreseeable future, they will continue until such time as the corner itself is developed.
Now, what does the traffic engineering studies indicate? Will there be additional traffic coming onto Copper River or Willow? And if so, what are the mitigations for that additional traffic? I'm trying to avoid a future complaint that we have now traffic bottlenecks because we intensified the use of the zoning and didn't plan for expansion of roadways or traffic lights.
Again, Andrew Benelli with Public Works Department. The traffic studies did indicate that some intersections would be impacted, and they've been conditioned with mitigating those impacts. One of the conditions? One of the mitigations will be to install a traffic signal at the corner of Copper and Willow. That is an intersection that's half in the city and half in the county. We also have additional development that's occurring north of there in the Copper River subdivision. They're also conditioned with making improvements. If you've been out there lately, you've seen Copper is being widened by Granville Homes right now. They've shifted the traffic over. It's going to be a four-lane road. It's been two-lane forever. They now have the traffic onto the, what's going to eventually be the westbound lanes. With this project, Lennar Homes will be widening the other portion of Copper and complete it out to a full four-lane, clear to Willow. There's also quite a bit of work underway currently on Willow. To widen Willow, that's being performed by the city of Clovis. So this project is mitigating their impacts.
So you can expand Copper into a four-lainer each way?
We are. This project is conditioned with expanding Copper.
And would those expansions be complete before the development opens up or after?
Before. They'll be doing it with the development. As they develop the roads within their subdivision, they'll be widening Copper and installing, working on the installation of the traffic signal.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from the guys? Make a motion to approve? Motion by Member Brettafield, second, and by Member Chavez. Any opposition to this motion? Seeing none, passes seven, zero. Six, zero. Oh, Member Sparza's absent. Thank you. Okay, now we'll go to our general administration. We already did item 3A. So now we'll go to 3B, actions pertaining to homeless family services agreements. This is the mayor's office.
Did we lose H. Spies? Council President, if I may, just make some opening comments. I was reminded yesterday by Mr. Spies that our homeless task force just reviewed this, we did review this item. I just think our summer break, you know, we lost that conversation, but this item was reviewed by the homeless committee and recommended for approval.
Okay, you could have said that after the presentation, but that's okay. So let's start from the beginning. We have the announcement of the item, and it's sponsored by the mayor. You have the floor.
Mayor, the item is sponsored by the mayor and the City Council Subcommittee on Homelessness. The city of Fresno is seeking to award contracts for homeless family services, including coordinated diversion, connection to community resources, housing placement, health stabilization, and other services designed to address homelessness in families in the city. These three organizations responded to the RFP and were evaluated by a qualified panel. Based on the RFP process, staff recommends St. Agnes Medical Center, Marjorie Mason Center, and Pavarello House for two-year agreements, actually 22-month agreements in the amount of $314,243,000 total. Those individual agreements are St. Agnes Medical Center, $77,316, Marjorie Mason Center in the amount of $118,463,50, and Pavarello House in the amount of $118,463,50. We can go into detail in terms of what these programs project, but this is, these projects were budgeted and approved in your overall HEAP spending plan under homeless family services.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to address this item? Please come forward. Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. Is there any opposition? Passes six, zero. Member Sparza absent. Item 4A.
Councilmember, Council President, I just wanted to introduce, not for comment, but we have three leaders from these organizations. Nicole Linder from Marjorie Mason Center, Sarah Mahadi from the Pavarello House Program Director for the Pavarello House, and also Yvonne Teroshin, who is head of Community Health Services for St. Agnes Medical Center.
Thank you.
Thank you for the introduction, and thank you for your work and your leadership in our community. We appreciate that. Thank you. Next is approve the designation of President Capriolio as a voting delegate and two voting alternates to the League of Cities.
And to approve.
Motion by Member Arias, second, and by Member Chavez. Anyone in the public wish to comment? Bring it back. Screen is clear. Any opposition? I don't know. Any opposition to the motion? I did go to the public, thank you. Seeing none, passes six, zero.
Can you just tell us who the alternates are? That you can say this?
I assume we wanted to keep the same agenda, and that would be myself, Member Soria, Member Brandow's absent, so I don't know if Member Chavez had his name in that. I thought he did. So that would be the three that I would propose.
All right.
Member Carbasi.
So he gets my office and that, okay.
No, no, no. I'll do that. Not a bad committee, but.
So the matter passes six, zero. Member Sparza absent. Next, 4B, approve a license agreement for a satellite office space in District Seven.
Council President. That was moved to consent and approved.
Thank you. We'll go to unscheduled communications. Anyone in the public wish to address any item in the city of Fresno? Please come forward. And I have a card from Mary Padilla. Mary, if you're here, please come forward. And a card from Daniel Love. Mr. Love, it's your opportunity to speak. You'll have three minutes after you give us your name and address.
The name's David Love, not Daniel. Number four. Address, 5705 East Huntington, apartment 205, 93727. I voice all the way to Washington, D.C. for eco-balance of power. I voice all the way to Sacramento, and also to the United States of America, and also to the light of the city of Fresno. We're talking about... They like to block a lot, those machines.
Sorry, Mr. Love, we're trying to do, keep our agenda moving, so there are...
Don't worry.
It's a moving part, so...
We're talking about Terry, the Dry Bone Satan, Satan Ministry. I call it Satan Ministry. We're talking about World War IV, the Pentagon. You guys blocked it right there. We're talking about Mark Esper, World War IV with Russia, as they are trying to slavery Russia. That's their next plan. Do I sound like Terry, the Dry Bone Satan? All right. You guys like to do audio of machines? Is Washington, D.C. paying attention? When Godfather of Heaven war, and there's white lightning, Lord Jesus Christ, and there's living water, there has to be eco-balance of power in the White House. You're seeing the storm of the century. We're talking about 21st century. David Love never fought the first Monks saint. The only white dove from the Mon population. You guys autoing crying stuff? I ain't crying over here. The 100 at the 100 door. You guys cheating audio in the language of HMNG? The heart on the mountain? Are you guys laughing at Caleb Ministry? I want one hour so I can voice all the way to Washington, D.C. so they will pay attention. Those geniuses want to be geniuses? They're not geniuses. You guys block right there again? That's somebody else. We're talking about Mon Shongs, all Satans, Godfather of Heaven, and Lord Jesus Christ has found out. They have killed the Sam team of the Holy Spirit. And they have killed GP's Holy Spirit. Is that three minutes? That's still not enough to voice. Is Terry over there laughing?
Sir, your time is up.
Everybody go airplane mode. Talking about the people, music.
Thank you, David. All right, anyone else wish to come forward and give us your opinion on any item in front of the council or the city of Fresno? We will close unscheduled communication. I've had a request from a colleague to take items, 1P, as in Paul, 1Q, as in Queen, one of my favorite bands, by the way. Great movie. Move that to September 19. So those two items will be moved at the request of the council, Member Arias and So those two items will be moved at the request of the council, Member Arias in particular, to September 19th. So if anyone sees anything I've overlooked, let me know. We'll be back at 1:30 to hear items 1J, P, Q, E, and N. We did, okay. We'll see you all at 1:30. Thank you for being here today. And I set a new record.
Yes, you did. Well done.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We'll be back at 1. You guys don't get battery watches now. Watches are batteries for your watches, because you're only a minute late. Did you get everything taken care of? All right, we have, good afternoon. Yeah, as my colleague said, the responsible people are here. So, welcome back. Good to see you all. We will go through these consent items that were pulled for the 1:30 dissertation, and first up is 1P. I pulled that. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve. I have a motion and a second. We've already taken it out to the community, so we can go right to the vote. Is there any opposition? Seeing none, it passes 4-0 with Members Soria, Arias, and Brettafield absent. Next is 1J.
Council President?
Yes.
Can I confirm something? I had the P and Q removed to 9-19.
I'm sorry. Okay, we'll start over. I pulled 1E, motion to approve, seconded by Member Chavez. We already took it to the public, so is there any opposition to the motion? Passes 4-0 with Brettafield, Soria, and Spar, Sparza's here, Brettafield, Soria, and Arias absent. So, sorry? How about P? That's continued to September 19th. We could put those over to the next meeting. I don't know if that's, they're time sensitive or?
Make a motion to approve 1J.
We have a motion and a second on number 1J. Any opposition? Seeing none, passes 4-0. Soria, Brettafield, and Arias absent. That leaves 1N, I believe. Am I on track? Okay, we're on item 1N that you pulled. 1N, as in Nancy.
Would you like a presentation on this, or do you have questions first? This is the code enforcement abatement contract.
Yes, so I just wanted to see if what we could do, I know that there's been concerns that have been raised by other folks. I wanted to see if we could limit, I don't know how this council feels, that if we could limit the proposal to maybe the time period for a new RFP, I would feel much more comfortable. I think that there are a number of other also vendors that could potentially do the similar work, so I'd love to see another competitive process go out. So if we could, I would be comfortable to approve for, if it's a 90-day period, or maybe four months, 120 days to go through the entire RFP process, I would make a motion to approve this, limiting it with that.
The proposed contract would contain a 60-day notice of termination provision. So at any point with 60 days' notice, we can terminate that contract. If you choose, we can start a process immediately, make it more inclusive, possibly bring it back next time to say one or more contracts, not necessarily just one. But we do have sort of limitations based on where we are. So with that direction, yes, we can do that.
So then I would give direction to you that start immediately to start an RFP process, and I would be open to seeing multiple vendors, if that's available.
Right, we can at least bring that as an option, yes.
Yes.
I have a motion and a second. I think our, the gentleman here is a potential vendor for that item that he spoke on earlier, correct? So what we're saying is we're going to open it up. So your dissertation was pretty good, apparently, right? So here we go. Is that correct? So let me go to Member Carbasi.
Attorney, quick question. So was there an RFP that went out for this?
Yes.
And was it advertised in the paper?
It was advertised in the paper as well as the website.
Okay. So what happened to where some people feel that it wasn't open to them? Because it was, correct?
Can somebody explain how the website process works for RFPs and bidding?
Yes, Michael Brown, Senior Procurement Specialist, Purchasing Unit. On the website, it is posted to everyone that views the Planet Bid site, and anyone that is registered on the site is notified by an email.
How many people are registered, or businesses registered on that website?
Thousands.
Okay.
I, I did not handle this particular RFP, but I know that it went out to a lot of potential We only received two, I believe, proposals, and a committee went through both of those and, as always, chose an awardee.
Was it also published in the, in the B?
It is published in the Business Journal.
Business Journal, okay.
Okay, so I understand that, and I'm going to support the motion. My only concern is that I don't want the impression that the city didn't do its job, that it was out there, and that it's up to, I mean, Sequoia Western's going to be pretty upset right now because they did the process properly and they may not get the contract. But it is good to have a more, we want to have choices, and I understand that too. So the city, my understanding is the city did do its job, and there was an open process.
Followed the normal process, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, screen is clear. We have, I'm sorry, City Manager, Assistant City Manager, sorry.
Just to add to Mike's comments, the person has, or the entity has to register, and they are registered by classification, and I believe when they register under that classification, they can even opt to see emails come to them. Is that correct, Mike? Okay, so it's important that they register so that they have the ability to get that information. I just looked, I didn't look at this one this morning, but I looked at another one, and the statistics showed that we got a very good response on a different contract proposal. So, you know, I think the process is pretty robust.
I think the moral of the story, sir, is to find out how to register, if you haven't, and get on that website process. I'm a flip phone guy, so I don't do technology very well.
And, and purchasing, I think, has a line that if somebody needs help in registering, they're able to help them with that as well?
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any opposition? Seeing none?
Yes, I'm voting no on the item.
I asked if there's any opposition, so you're not opposing it, correct?
Yes.
You are opposing it, so you're a no vote.
Yes, I'm a no vote.
A member, there was a motion and a second. I thought Member Soria motioned, and I thought Member Chavez seconded. And so it passes 6-1, Member Arias, a no vote. And then that's it. We're done.
Aye.
We went through everything. So that means?
Registered in conflict.
Yeah. So does that mean they open it up again? Does that mean? All right, so we have reviewed the requests for the consent items to be reviewed. I think that's it. I think we're, we're finished. Am I correct, Madam Clerk?
Am I, question? I guess you guys voted on 1J that I had pulled. I wasn't here, which is my fault. But am I able to ask a question of it, or is it?
You can on your own time. We're done.
We're done here. Okay, all right.
Motion adjourned. And remember, remember, everything's been voted on. Please remember your thoughts and prayers to Fresno State Police Chief David Warta. He's a fantastic person, a fantastic father, a husband. He gave so much to our community, so our blessings to the Warta family. Thank you all very much.